All right, everybody, we are now live on Facebook. Thank you for joining us. Just as a quick reminder, I can mute you, but I cannot unmute you. So if you need to speak, you have to unmute your own microphone.
Having trouble with the audio from Mr. Charlton?
Can you hear me?
There you go, Ron.
You got me? Okay, I'll do the invocation. Let us pray. Holy God, we come before you this night once again with thanksgiving in our hearts. Thanking you, Lord, for your many blessings that you have so richly blessed each of us with. And, Lord, we ask that you would keep your hand of mercy upon this great land. And, Lord, through these trying times that we're going through, that you would have mercy and grace upon it. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen, thank you.
And you want to go ahead and do the pledge? Chairman, you want me to do the pledge?
Yes, well, imagine there's a flag on the screen. Everyone, please do.
You did.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is we're temporarily suspending the public comment. So the next item is the approval of minutes from the regular council session of March 10th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
This is Lily Jean, you need to adopt the agenda, I believe.
Oh, thank you. The next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Raymond, can I make a motion? We approve.
A motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolina, I believe, all in favor?
Hi.
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 The agenda is approved. Next, we have, thank you for, Ms. Johnson, for pointing that out. Next, we have the approval of minutes from the regular council session of March 10th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, Ron Charlton, I move that we approve those as written.
This is Raymond, second to motion.
Motion by Mr. Charlton, is there a second?
This is Raymond, I second the motion.
By Mr. Newton, all in favor of approving the minutes from March 10th?
Hi.
Hi.
A second by Mr. Newton, all in favor? Okay, the minutes from March 10th meeting are approved. We next move to the consent agenda, and by virtue of approving the agenda for today, the consent agenda items are approved. The board appointment of Parks and Recreation Commission, Councilmember Goggins recommends to approve Jim Mallow. Board appointment Georgetown County Fire District One Board, Councilmember Morant recommends reappointing William Massey and procurement number 20-013, fiscal 20 municipal less see purchase financing for vehicles and vehicle. Those three items are approved by virtue of approving the agenda for today. Next, we move to public hearings. I open the floor for public comments related to ordinance number 20-10, an ordinance to declare a surplus and approximately a half acre portion of land located in the town of Andrews. Is there anyone that is at the portal that would like to speak about ordinance number 20-10? Hearing none, I will, yes?
I'm simply making the motion to move forward with the approval of the designation of the land as surplus and for the adoption of ordinance 2010.
You missed Carolina? Okay, I will now close the
Chairman, that's public hearing.
Public hearing on ordinance number?
2010, 20-10.
Yes, yes ma'am. Yes.
Oh, we're moving on?
Yes, closing the public hearing on ordinance number 20-10. Now open the floor for public comments related to ordinance number 20-11, an ordinance to amend the future land use map regarding approximately 2.2 acres located North Morgan Avenue outside of Andrews. Any from the public, not from the council, but from any public comment on ordinance number 20-11? Hearing none, I will close the floor for public comments relating to ordinance number 20-11. We now open the floor for public comments related to ordinance number 20-13, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease and term agreement for property off of Great Avenue in Polley's Island. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about ordinance number 20-13? Hearing none, I will close the floor for public comments. Say again?
Sir, no one has signed up for public comment.
Okay, hearing none, we'll close the floor for public comments related to ordinance number 20-13. We next move to third reading of ordinances, ordinance number 20-10. Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I hope everyone can hear me tonight. And this is the third reading of ordinance 20-10. This ordinance was amended at second reading, and the changes have now been reflected in the ordinance. What this will do is it will authorize the county to deed the property over to the town of Andrews upon their request. And we are ready to move forward with that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions from council for Mr. Bryant? Okay, note, a motion to amend will be required to incorporate recommended revisions to ordinance and agreement. So open the floor, is there any, for any motions for ordinance number 20-09? It was 10, I'm sorry. Strike what I just said, we do not need a motion to amend. So we'll open, open the floor for motions for ordinance number 20-10.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 20-10.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morant. Discussion? Okay, all in favor of third reading approval of ordinance number 20-10?
Ron Charlton, yes.
This is Everett.
Raymond Newton, yes.
Lily Johnson, yes.
Louis Moran, yes.
John Thomas, yes. Okay, any opposed? Ordinance number 20-10 is approved on third reading. Next, we move to second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 20-09. Mr. Bryant, again.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is the long awaited intergovernmental agreement with the city of Georgetown. I will note that Sandra Udisay from the city is on, and also Lawrence Flynn, their legal counsel is also on the meeting tonight. You can probably see them both. This intergovernmental agreement has gone through a few different iterations, but you've already had the presentation made to you by Mr. Flynn. So we won't get into the minutia, but I can tell you that the intergovernmental agreement reflects a village cap that is agreeable to the county. It also reflects a term cap of 25 years. And ultimately, it will begin July 1, 2020. It'll run through the same term, 2045. And honestly, that's really about all I have in terms of the agreement. You already are familiar with the terms and what it's going to do in the city's redevelopment plan. If you have any specific questions, we'll try to answer those. And like plans on as well, so help out with that.
I'm sorry, council members, just a reminder, if you're not currently speaking, please make sure your microphones are muted. We are getting some background noise that's interfering.
And also to note, this will require an amendment for the outdated terminology.
Those are, those are the changes that are, I see on the on the form where some dates are changed. Are they, are they just, what do you call them, Scrivener corrections? No significant changes, are there?
There is nothing significant from the first, the first couple of versions, but it's not necessarily a Scrivener's error, though, but it is substantive. But it's mainly changing the term. The village cap was already agreed to, and it was deemed acceptable, so.
Okay, are there any questions for council for Mr. Bryant? Okay, open the floor for motions on second reading of ordinance number 20-09. And note that we will need a motion to amend to incorporate revisions to the ordinance and the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, Lily Jean, I move for adoption of ordinance number 20-09.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Ron Charlton.
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we amend this motion to include updated information.
Do we need a second first, Wes?
You need a second for the amendment.
Mr. Flynn, could you please mute your microphone? I'm sorry, we're getting some back.
20-09.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion on the amendment.
Okay, Wes, are you there?
Yes.
20-10, 20-09.
There we go, okay, second by Mr. Newton. Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, I believe now would be the time to have a motion to amend.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Newton just seconded the amendment to the motion. So we're ready to vote, I believe, unless there are questions.
That's right, she's right, it broke up a little bit, John, but that's right. So you're at the vote for the amendment.
All right, okay, so we have, we have a a motion and a motion to amend. Is there a second for the motion to amend?
Mr. Newton made that motion to second. You're at the, you're at the vote.
All right, so where are we, Wes? We've got a motion?
Vote for the amendment. Call for the vote.
All right, all in favor of the amendment? Motion to amend.
This is Raymond, this is Raymond, yes.
Lily Jean, yes.
Louis Moran, yes.
Everett, yes.
John Thomas, yes. Okay, so back to the original motion. Is there a, all in favor of the original motion?
Raymond, yes.
Lily Jean, yes.
Louis, yes.
John Thomas, yes. We get Ron? Okay, the ordinance number 20-09 is approved on second reading. Moving on to ordinance number 20-11, an ordinance to amend the future land use map regarding 2.27 acres outside of Andrews. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, thank you. Actually, 11B and 11C are related to the 2.27 acres. 11B, which we're talking about now, is the future land use map. Again, this is 2.27 acres located north of Andrews, specifically at 855 North Morgan Avenue. The current, the future, the current future land use map shows the property designated as commercial. They have a rezoning request in which we're getting ready to go over in a second. They're requesting to go to MR10, which does not conform to commercial on the future land use map. So the planning commission is unanimously recommending that county council change, amend the future land use map regarding this 2.27 acres and change it from commercial to medium density residential. If you'd like for me to run over 11C, the rezoning, before you vote, would you like me to do that? I think we usually do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, let's combine the two.
Okay, 11B is the rezoning request I just went over. This is actually a request from Wendell Powers, who was an agent for the Kindley Family Trust in Andrews. As I said, this is the 2.27 acres on North Morgan. Currently, this property is vacant. Two rather unique things about the property. First of all, it's about, it contains a 20-foot wide power line or power easement running through the property. I've noticed the easements generally paralleled to North Morgan, and it appears to be about 100 feet off of North Morgan into this property. The property is shaped like a triangle. It's currently, as I said, is vacant, is surrounded by forest and agriculture, general commercial, and a little bit of MR10 zoning, which is what they're asking to go to. To the, it's vacant land to the north, south, and east of this property, and it's commercial and residential property mixed to the west. The property is in a flood zone. It currently is, the new flood zone maps will also keep part of it in the flood zone. Doesn't mean they can't use it, it just means when they do come in to use it, they'll have to meet the proper elevation requirements for whatever structures they put on the site. As I said, he's asking to go from general commercial to MR10. MR10 is your basic 10,000 square foot, single-family residential zoning district. It does, the M stands for mobile homes, it does allow mobile homes. He actually could put mobile homes in general commercial as well. I think what's really driving this request is that general commercial has a 50-foot front setback, and MR10 has a 25-foot front setback. And thus, their request to go to MR10, I believe their reasoning is that with that power line easement and the shape of the property, and if you apply a 50-foot front setback to it, it's pretty, along with some wetlands that are on the corner, too. I say wetlands, what appears to be wetlands on the county maps, anyway, would make the property pretty difficult to use. Staff did recommend that this rezoning be approved as requested. We sent out notices to everybody within 400 feet, put a sign on the property, advertised the property. The planning commission held a public hearing on this on February the 20th. No one came to speak regarding this issue except the applicant. The planning commission did unanimously adopt the staff's recommendation and is recommending to county council that you rezon this property, this triangle, to MR10, and at the same time amend the future land use map to show it as medium density residential instead of commercial. That's all I have.
Anyone from council have any questions for Mr. Johnson? If not, I'll open the floor for motions for combined ordinance number 20-11 and 20-12.
Mr. Chairman, this is Raymond, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 20-11 and 20-12.
A second? Is there a second for?
I'll second, this is Louis Moran, I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Moran, discussion? All in favor of ordinance number 20-11 and 20-12?
This Raymond, yes.
Lily Jean, yes.
Louis, yes.
Everett, yes.
Mr. Charlton? I think we have a yes from Mr. Charlton. Any opposed? Ordinance number 20-11 and 20-12 are approved on second reading. We now move to ordinance number 20-13. Execution of a lease and term extension for property off of Great Avenue in Polley's Island. Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is, if you have ever been to the Polley's Island Recycling Center, you have seen this tower. It has been there a long time, and it's actually a fairly crucial tower in Georgetown County as it holds the Palmetto 800, one of the system, one of the four systems in the county on this tower. And there's also the Midway Fire Rescue, they have their repeater located on this tower, along with some other private structures on the tower from outside firms. But this is a renewal, so to speak, of the lease. The lease had quite a number of amendments over the last 20 to 25 years. The company has changed hands, and they've asked that we just start sort of fresh, using the same terms. This would be for a total of 25 years. And again, we do, we do have a backside contract with them for our our structures that are located on the tower as well. It's the standard lease terminology that you've seen in the past. There's nothing creative about it. It has the standard hold armless, the standard provisions for default and that sort of thing. And we are asking that you move forward with this as second reading. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions from council for Mr. Bryant? If not, I'll open the floor for a motion for ordinance number 20-13.
Mr. Chairman, Ron Charlton, I move that we approve staff's recommendation on ordinance 20-13.
Motion by Mr. Charlton, is there a second?
This is Raymond, I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Newton. Any discussion? All in favor of ordinance number 20-13?
Yes.
Raymond, yes.
Louis, yes.
Everett, yes.
John, yes. Any opposed? Okay, ordinance number 20-13 is approved on second reading. We'll move to first reading of ordinances. We'll read into the record by title only, ordinance number 20-17 and ordinance number 20-18. Next, we move to bids. And on this one, Mr. Cullen will present it. I was on the, on the committee for this RFQ, and therefore, I recuse myself on this item. Ms. Johnson?
According to the agenda, Ms. Silver should present this, is that correct?
I've got Mr. Kille Cullen, but
Okay, all right, that's what's on the agenda, Mr. Kille Cullen.
Members of council, this is, this is Ed Kille Cullen. The committee received three qualified responses to the requests for qualifications. The committee conducted interviews with all three firms. After the interview process, scoring was finalized. Cost proposals were open for the two highest ranked firms. Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company, P.A., provided the lowest bid at $25,500 annually. The references were checked and found to be favorable. Therefore, the committee recommends to award Thompson Price Scott and Adams and Company of Whiteville, North Carolina. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions from council? If not, the floor is open for a motion on this item. May we have a motion on 20-003?
Ms. Lily Jean, this is Raymond, I make a motion that we accept 20-003.
Second, is there a second?
This is Louis Moran.
We have a motion and a second to accept 20-003. All in favor, let it be known by giving your name with your vote.
Yes, Raymond, yes.
Lily Jean, yes.
Louis Moran.
Yes.
The motion is carried, and we return council to Mr. Thomas, the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Newton, is there a second?
Mr. Thomas, I think we have a budget presentation.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Sorry.
Where is it?
You'd be under 15A.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, reports to council, I apologize. Reports to council, fiscal 2020 budget status report. Mr. Kille Cullen?
Thank you, Chairman Thomas, members of council. What I'd like to show you today is the fiscal year in summary, where we've been, where we are now, and what the potential outcomes are in this COVID environment. Change the slide, please. So this, this is a bird's eye view of the fiscal year's revenues and expenditures year-to-date this year compared to last year. So beginning on the left, in the blue bar, we have fiscal year 20 revenue through March 31st, 2020, $69,169, $190. By comparison, the orange bar shows fiscal year 19 at $67,704, $980. $1.5 million increase. The third bar over is FY20 expenditure. The third bar over is FY 20 expenditures at $61,363,265. And to the far right, the yellow bar is fiscal year 19 expenditures year to date at $53,313,674. Change the slide, please. So real property taxes growth has been as anticipated. The far left value of $35,501,831 was FY 16. If you follow the graph to the right for succeeding fiscal years, you will see as anticipated through various tax increases, the revenue has increased. To the right, you have a dotted line beginning with where we are today at March 30th, 2020. We have $40,295,794 in receipts. That is 98% of what we budgeted. If we project to the end of the fiscal year, that would be $41,155,400. All things considered, we probably do expect to collect that remaining 2%. Most of that revenue was collected prior to the status that we're in with the, in the COVID environment. Probably most of this 98% was collected by the March 31st, excuse me, March 15th deadline. Next slide, please. So you will probably notice that a lot of these screens are similar to last year. They've been modified to show some possibilities and we added in some additional screens that I'll continue to share with you. So building permits was selected. It's an indicator of general economic activity overall. And the, since 2016, as reported on the far left, $988,551. It's been up and down with the average being per year $1,138,374. To date, as of March 30th, 2020, we have collected $984,277. To the right of that value, you'll see some dotted lines. Those dotted lines are at best guesses of where we're going to go with the economy through the end of fiscal year 20. The top line, the one point, the one lane, 247,975 is the same value that we finished FY 19 with. With the impact of COVID, we're not anticipating going beyond that. We could, but I'm not anticipating that. The next line, the blue line down, is what it would look like if our revenue came in at 5% less than prior year. The next projection below that, the $1,123,178, is a projection if we came in at 10% less than prior year. We really don't know how that's going to play out. I will tell you that I've been on some conference calls with federal and state analysts. They are talking about through June 2020, there being a 15 to 20% decrease in sales and gross domestic product. Will that filter down to us? Are we really going to see a 10, 15, 20% decrease in building permits? Just don't know. There are construction loans out there that maybe are funding these projects that they're pressing on with them. Time will tell. Next slide, please. So this is the recording fees graph and recording fees is a good indicator of real estate mortgages. And this has stayed pretty stable through the years. And the actuals is real close to the average of $166,827 per year. To date, we have collected $151,172. We have the same projections, again, the top projection being what if we only collect as much as we did last year? The middle projection being what if we only collect 95% of what we collected last year? And then the bottom value, the $152,548 is what it would look like if we collected only 90%. Next slide, please. Documentary stamp fees are also collected on a lot of the real estate transactions in the register of deeds office and can be an indicator of the economy as a whole and more specifically to real estate type transactions. If you slide to the right under FY 2020, year to date, March 31st, the top value is the average over the past four years. On average, we have collected $688,305. So far to date, we've collected $550,202. The dotted lines to the right are the same. The top red dotted line being what if we collect nothing more than we did last year? The 727094, that's if we collect 95%. The 688826 is if we collect no more than 90% of what we collected last year. So much of the discussions with these analysts are, we're not quite sure beyond the short term where we're going with the economy. So that's why we're providing possible outcomes. Next slide, please. Local accommodations tax. This is a tax that we collect on short-term rentals shorter than 90 days. A good indicator of tourist industry, which is where we receive a lot of revenue from. Last year, we had a banner year. We collected $2,362,157. To date so far, we have collected That's just what we've collected to date. That's not indicating that we've had any kind of dip as of yet. So council has passed an ordinance banning these short-term rental stays, I believe through May 1st. So that negates any revenue from April. And depending on future decisions will indicate where we go from here. So the low here, if we only collected 90%, that would be the orange bar at the bottom. That would be $2,019,644. And perhaps we'll collect as much as last year if there's any pent-up demand and perhaps the ban is lifted come May 1st. Difficult to project that. Next slide, please. Hospitality tax goes very hand in hand with accommodations tax, although the local taxpayers pay the hospitality tax as well. That's the tax, a sales tax on the restaurant bills. To the far right, you'll see what we've collected year to date at $2,287,075. The average that we collect over the past four years, just above that value is $2,938,230. The state, the governor has banned local eating establishments. That will have a large impact on what our future collections will be. If there's a swift resolution to the COVID issue, then perhaps some pent-up demand will be realized and tax receipts would increase. And we may realize what we collected last year, the $3,075,295. It's hard to guess. Have no indication that I've seen of what the plans are to lift that ban. Next slide, please. All right. So this is not a dollar value graph. It's tonnage collected at the landfill of construction and demolition debris. And that's a measure often of construction. So that has stayed very consistent over the past few years. So far at the landfill, they have collected 20,709 tons of CND debris. It's, again, if maybe, I'm not sure if it's logical that these construction projects, if they're not going to be hindered because they have construction loans, just what's going to happen? You know, are they going to continue bringing in this debris to give us optimism that construction's going on as planned? Just don't know. Next slide, please. All right. So I wanted to touch base with health insurance. This has been a very difficult issue, a cost to get our arms around. Just a little bit of history. If you go back to the left side under 2016, you see a cost of $3,729,205 and then one right next to it, a similar cost. That is when we were on the state PIBA plan. We were not self-insured. 2018 is when we became self-insured and we went from $3,869,412 to $6,347,543. After 18, it began to level off, but continued to increase. The much of the increase between FY 18 or 19, excuse me, FY 19 and 20, at least the largest increase has been in hospital visits. There's a lot of HIPAA protection laws out there. We don't, we're not able to drill down and find out anything more than that at this point. So it's difficult for us to address, to strategize and plan how to reduce or contain hospital visit costs. It's not only hospital visits. That's just the largest of the ones. Next slide, please. So what's next? The state and federal analysts, they're talking about 15 to 20% decreases in sales and GDP between now and the end of June. One of the state analysts, Frank Rainwater, with the Department of Fiscal Affairs at the state, that projected signs of recovery would be as soon as January 2021. That's one person's opinion. Although I do know he's well respected in that area. How long will the state and local bans on the tourism activities of dining and rentals continue in place? We're at the mercy and discretion of the local and state governments to make that call. And obviously, that'll be in large part to the level of COVID exposure we might be incurring. Health insurance costs is a big ticket item and I know we've put together sort of an ad hoc task force to study this. In fact, we have an upcoming meeting regarding this. And we're going to focus on that particular topic. We're pulling in everybody that has some sort of ownership in that. And we're going to spend an afternoon and tackle that subject in hopes of finding a way to contain it. Next slide, please. Oh, so if you have any other questions regarding this material, I'll be glad to give you what answers that I can at this time.
Any questions from council for Mr. Kill Cullen?
Hey, this is Raymond.
Yes, sir.
Question on the health. I got a question on the health insurance. I wasn't here when we went from to private self-insured, so to speak. Is there, is there any, any other counties going through the same health insurance problems we have? And have we asked to see what they're doing to remedy the problem?
I can tell you that back in 16 and 17, when we were contemplating this, we were trying to mirror what they are doing in the city of Myrtle Beach. I'm not in contact with any of them, so I don't know that they're actually having those problems. I'll be happy to inquire. They're the only other government entity that I know that's self-funded.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Kill Cullen. Is there any way possible that you, oh, we can go back and compare what we are now paying and what we would be paying if we were still with PIBA? Is there any way to make that comparison?
I would imagine that PIBA historical data may be available and I can inquire with them and let you know.
Any other questions for Mr. Kill Cullen? Mr. Carolina, you have a question?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can barely hear you. Go ahead.
All right. Regarding the increase in costs as displayed, on a self-insurance program where we are self-insured, is there a give and take factor there where once we, if we're looking at the overall costs, and you indicated that the cost increase came about because of visitation, is that correct?
Activity at the hospital, yes. Going to the hospital.
So any gain that we would have made on a self-insure, say a self-insurance program, does that feature, is it a give and take situation? Once you get your employees orientated to a regular medical regimen, you're going for your annual checkups, you're exercising all these recommendations, taking your medication. And if, again, initially, you're trying to hold the line, you may have employees that once they start their they're discovering things that they never knew they had or they now had to be maintained. But under this self-insurance program, is there a give and take in premium? One year you may pay this. And if there is a, it appears that the employees are holding the line, they're maintaining, that there's a return of premium feature?
Not currently. And we're trying to mirror the PIBA plan. Now, I will tell you that you brought up a good point. We've encouraged employees to get checked out. And there may be an element to this of people who felt prior to getting what they felt was inexpensive healthcare. They think, oh, this is a bargain. Now I need to start going. So there might have been some pent-up demand once we implemented the care here facility here in town for the employees. In fact, there's been a lot of discussion about that. And I think there's some validity to that notion. In fact, there's been a lot of discussion about that, and I think there's some validity to that notion.
Okay, very good, and...
We have very even with CareHere being our in-house healthcare provider, we have very limited information due to HIPAA protections. So we get very generalized information. We do see which healthcare providers are being paid, but we have no idea which employees are going for what procedures. And you know, that's why we have the, we have a healthcare administrator that uses the claims for us and refers them to different insurance policies to make sure we get reimbursed, you know, to cover certain thresholds we've tried to be insured for.
Ed, this is Raymond. Have, what is our healthcare cost per, broken down per employee average?
I would have to get back with I, I do not have that figure right now, I would have to get back with you.
How many, how many total employees we got?
650, roughly.
So that's going to be around $13,000, I take it, with 7.9 million spent. What, and what would be the average of counties, other counties in South Carolina that is self-insured like we are? Are we in the ballpark, or are we way out there? Just, we don't have any, you know, don't have any information to compare that to.
That's nothing that we've looked at here. I can certainly go out to the other counties, certainly to their websites, and I should be able to find county employment figures, and, you know, the financial statements are public, so I should be able to get back with you on some sort of numbers along that line.
Any other questions for Mr. Kill, Kill Cullen? Well, thank you very much for that presentation. It's apparent we need to take a look at our health, health programs.
Good job, Ed.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. Open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Charlton, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Newton. This meeting is adjourned. I wish all of you and your families stay safe, and we'll see you soon.